Is the state.
Who's that?
Steve Dan.
Oh.
Steve Dan.
Yeah, I forgot.
Whenever I hear that night name, I think of the young man from up north. Tammy, are you ready?
Aye.
Becky, are you ready? Is anybody gonna ask me if I'm ready?
So we're canceling the meeting, is that what you're saying?
I am not ready, but let's do it anyway, okay?
Oh, I see.
All right.
Caitlin's buying coffee over at this coffee shop, so let's go. Oh. Did I get that message wrong? I must've, I must've got that message wrong.
He read, he read the memo incorrectly. All right, if everyone is ready. Good morning. It is Monday, August 18th, 2025. I will call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. A couple of announcements. We reserve the right to enter closed session at any time as necessary to discuss the agenda item currently before the board. The Lincoln County Board of Commissioners also reserves the right to take agenda items out of order for the convenience of the party involved. We do follow the Open Meetings Act with amendments, which is posted at the entrance to this room. At 9:15, we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, also following the Open Meeting Act with amendments. First thing, I think I need a blue pen, Becky.
Need a pen or?
Uh, I think I need a whole pen.
There's one here, if you don't, here's one.
Oh, there you go, thank you.
I'll steal.
Thank you.
I'll steal from that drawer.
All right. Our first order of business is to open with prayer. I do believe it's Commissioner Hughley's turn. He's absent today. Commissioner Williams, would you do us the honors, please?
Please join me if you're so inclined. Heavenly fathers, we meet today, convene on behalf of our citizens. Give us guidance and wisdom to make good decisions and serve those who reside in our wonderful county. Thank you for all the recent rain. It's been a blessing. We have been very grateful and thank you again for everything that you do to bless our, our community. Be with our first responders and our military, both here and abroad, to protect us and protect our freedoms as we enjoy them. Be with our employment group overall that serves the citizens here and provide protection for them as they do their daily work. These things we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Our next order of business is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioner meeting that was held last Monday, August 11th, 2025.
My motion would be to approve those minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on August 11th of 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye. Before us next are the claims and treasurers receipts.
Be my motion to approve the claims and treasurer's receipts as presented with the caveat that we will pull any questionable expanded chair for further consideration.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I would like to make note of the very first line item on the revenue listing from our noxious weed department. With the rain subsiding occasionally and the wind going down like it wasn't blowing this spring constantly, they were really able to get out. And having Barry be a part of that operation has really helped them cover a lot of ground. So that, that was a, a good partnership, in my opinion. With that, if there's no other discussion, roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye. Good morning, Joe.
Morning.
I didn't think you were gonna be here, so I moved those over.
I, I will add that Commissioner Hughley has joined the meeting at 9:06.
Somebody tried to keep the meeting, I had to run down there.
I did, I just took it back.
Joe, I'm gonna give you a minute to settle in before we move on.
What do we have?
Fee report.
Okay. Good, settle this, he's gonna get.
All right. We will now address the receive an order filed amended fee report submitted by the county clerk.
I went to make my bank deposit, I found out we had $35 more, so.
Really? Well, that's a good thing.
Yeah, that's a good thing, so.
More, more is always a good thing.
My motion would to be receive an order filed amended fee report submitted by the county clerk as she just explained the extra funds in the deposit.
Second.
Of $1,061.
Second.
So the previous one was a thousand twenty-six, huh?
Good math there, Commissioner Hughley. We have a motion and a second. I will also add that this is for all of us to sign. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
You'll probably have to sign those anyway. You'll probably have to sign all those anyways, how we pass them through.
Excuse me.
We're all looking around to see where it's coming from. I hope nobody's listening on a earphone. Sounded like a balloon being strangled. Our next item is to authorize the chair to sign a right-of-way application submitted by the Pinpoint Communications Company.
Good morning, Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning. So this is a pretty large permit for some fiber installation. As you can see, the, if you guys have a copy of it, all the noted locations, it's pretty extensive through the south and, to the south and east of North Flat.
I'm trying to find the legend that tells me what the red squares mean. Is that?
This is all, this is all it? Um, those are some of their handholds, the junction boxes.
Oh, okay.
That they'll put in. What's that, Kim? This entire. Yeah, that's a lot of detail, that's good detail.
I've never seen that level of check before, a company, is it?
So the handheld, is there boxes that they put up, is that right?
Uh, yeah, most of them will be flush with the ground level.
Oh, okay.
Just for pull boxes?
Yeah, pull boxes, yep.
Okay.
I'm not sure I've ever seen a performance bond attached to an application before. Is that because of the size of the project?
Yeah, and most of the time, we wrote that into our permit whenever we changed all the regulations here a while back. And that was one of the things we added in. On the smaller ones, we typically don't get those, but on the larger ones, we do.
Do you know, Jason, maybe this isn't a fair question for you, but do you know, is this a result of the brand broadband expansion project?
That I do not know.
Well, I'd be curious to know. I, I wasn't aware if they had approved any of those applications yet, but I know we had very few companies apply in our county, and Pinpoint was one of them.
Really?
Yeah. I, I'm gonna make a note, I can check into that with the broadband office.
Well, that's a MBB four. So that'd be in the broad, broadband program.
Where do you see that at, Joe?
On the very first page of the law.
It does say that, right underneath, on the map even. I wonder why they're boring all around but not doing anything, taking anything down this lumpy road? Because I do know there's one resident that lives there.
That's probably why. Oh, I'm sure.
That's another question I'll ask. Of them, not you. Okay, are there any other questions for Jason? If not, I would seek a motion.
I would make a motion that if we approve the broadband application, why do we have to do this similarly? Pinpoint Communications would authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I will also state for the record that there is a check attached to the application from Pinpoint Communications in the amount of $15,180.11. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Hughley.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. I see, yes, Joe, across the line.
That's a nice check.
Yes. That is a nice check. The largest one I've seen since I've gotten here. Glad to see that work being done. It is 9:15. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization following the Open Meeting Act, which is posted with amendments at the entrance to our room. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes of last week's meeting held on Monday, August 11th, 2025.
Be my motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting that was held August 11th of 2025.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye. Next are certificates of correction and refund is submitted by the county assessor. Good morning, Julie. County Assessor Julie Stinger, and it indicates that there are no correct submissions for today. It's gonna be Monday all day. That was the only item on for our Board of Equalization. We will recess at 9:16, that might be a record. And or, I'm sorry, we will adjourn at 9:16 and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Our next agenda item is at 9:30.
It must've been in the stack, I didn't see. There's a whole bunch here, I think. Becky, are these clipped because we can only, Neil, we need to sign the first one? Several claims back there.
Yeah, they should all be signed. Michelle, she's looking at me, so I think she put it together, so she got a total for the minutes. But yes, so they're clipped together, they're all the same, that her. Just attached the tape to the very front. She was trying to be efficient.
That's fine.
She did good.
I've, I've heard very positive feedback about her joining your office.
She called me, too.
And get you feedback?
Oh, you said positive feedback. WH office equipment, what do you think?
Huh?
What do you think, WH office equipment, you and I, not many, not much competition.
I don't buy it, no.
Get that jury in, that'd be a score.
Yep. I thought our deductible was higher than that. I thought it was $10,000.
I wonder if they're, I think that's our professional.
Oh, maybe that's it.
I think people, most people, I don't realize how much Ray Maxwell gave to this county, actually, thirty or forty years, UTVs and ATVs. I guess I read the note wrong. I thought it was 24 to 26.
Well, I think it's a combination of the current billing plus the lagging $16,000.
Right, right, but, so if that 24 should have been 26 instead of the current 26, that's less than 2,000.
Apparently, we're gonna repeat the same thing.
It would be less than 2,000 difference, there's almost for. It just can't make sense of the math. Because I don't know if it gets 37, but anyway. It just can't make sense of the math, because I don't know if she gets 37, but anyway. I just looked at the two totals.
No, no, it's the dispatch service, dispatch. Says the last 10, we're at 24, 467 instead of current 26,090. So the difference being 10, 10 invoices, what would that make?
Oh, so they didn't bill any of them, if they're correct about.
Well, a portion of it, that says 10 invoices are wrong, that doesn't compute 16,000 here. That would be 20,000.
Really? Okay, so that'd be about 1,600, was it 26, yeah?
It was 26,090 dollars.
Okay, so 17 times 10, 17,000, about that, because this was the 2, 467, so probably close.
So part of it was under an old contract and part of it's under a new contract, Becky?
They didn't change the rate when we renewed the new contract, I guess.
I wonder if they changed the service, they give us the same service.
We hope. Hope they answered the phone.
I, I called it not too many years ago and they didn't. It is 9:30. The agenda item before us is a public hearing to discuss and consider action on an application by AHA3 Properties, LLC for a conditional use permit to allow construction of a private recreational camp that will include three small cabins and one larger lodge. The property is located approximately four miles west of the Sutherland Reservoir in a TA1 Transitional Agriculture District as described as lots 4, 5, 6, and accretions and part of the north half of the south half of Section 8 Township 13 North, range 34 west of the 6th Prime Meridian in Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Morning.
Good morning.
Judy Clark, Lincoln County Planning Administrator. And what you have in front of you, you should see a copy of the review comments. Attached to that is a resolution from the Planning Commission. Attached to that is a location map, couple of location maps, and then a couple of site plans. Kind of a larger one to show you the area and then smaller to kind of show you what structures they're proposing. On August 12th, 2025, the Lincoln County Planning Commission unanimously passed a resolution recommending approval of the proposed project with the condition that the property will not be used for commercial purposes. Planning staff has no objection to the proposed private hunting retreat. The property is located west of Sutherland Reservoir surrounded by agricultural properties with limited agricultural dwellings. The hunting retreat will be seasonal and should not be a detriment to the surrounding property owners. I do have a representative of the application here if you'd like to ask him any questions, otherwise I'm happy to help.
Is there someone here in the audience that would like to speak to the project, if you would like to?
I have a question.
Okay, come on up, sign in on the register and announce your name and address for the public record, please.
Do we declare this a public hearing?
I did.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear that. Typically, we opened it and asked for a testimony.
This is the, this is what I'm following.
Oh, gotcha.
Thanks, Tyler.
If I might, so is this for a, one particular family?
Yep, yes, it is. It's a.
I'm sorry, sir, could you announce your name and address, please?
Yeah, Mick Mal, Mal's Modern Builders, Ogleala, Nebraska.
Is it for your family, Nick?
No, it's for the owner, it's strictly for his family.
And who is that?
Beaver Alpin. He's from Texas.
And what was his name again?
Beaver Alpin.
Mick, is there anything else? You're here to speak in support of the project.
Yes.
Is there anything else that you feel you would like to share with us, or?
Just, I know it's strictly for his family. I know it looks, there's three cabins on there. One, one cabin is, got one bedroom, and I think another one has two bedrooms and then a single bedroom in the other one. And then it's just a lodge for, that has kitchen in it and stuff. But it's, like I say, it's, it's not for commercial use.
Okay, you're just, you're upset because you're building it, Nick?
Yeah.
Judy, on the, this is all the information that's being submitted today for the project, correct? On here, the road names are printed so tiny I can't see them. Can you give me some bearings here?
Uh, maybe, because I don't know if I can see them either, to tell you the truth. I'm going to have to jump up and look at a map, I think.
I mean, I can see the interstate there.
Yeah, there's the interstate.
It says it's four miles west of the reservoir.
Yes, and so you're, you're north, okay, I do have one, you're north-south road. Okay, so your, your east-west road is West Walker Road?
Yep.
And then your north-south road is.
Does that say O'Fallon's?
O'Fallon's, yeah.
Yeah, does it say O'Fallon's?
Yep.
And then fairly close to the interstate.
Fairly close to the interstate, yep, just a little south.
Was there mention of this being a hunting retreat for this particular individual and family?
Yes.
Are there other structures around that?
There's, go ahead.
Is there what?
Are there any homes around there?
Yeah, there's a home there and a, and a building that they house all their equipment in, tractors and.
But other families around there, if you got a hunting retreat, are concerned about other properties close by with housing?
There's not a house real close. The closest one is probably about a section, half a section to the east is probably the closest home. You can kind of see that on this map, the GIS map. We did have a neighboring landowner that came to Planning Commission, and her biggest concern was making sure that they stayed on their property to hunt, which, I mean, that's going to be pretty tough to control. And then her other statement was she didn't want it to be a commercial, which, when they applied, they applied as a private. But Planning Commission did put that condition on there just to ensure that it would not be commercial.
So they can't post dates on the internet and have people sign up for a fee to come there and hunt?
Right.
That would be my definition of commercial.
Absolutely.
And what is, and I'm not going to have a problem probably with this, I'm just curious. And this may be a question for either you, Judy, or legal counsel, and if they do, what is our recourse?
Good question.
Other than saying, we said not to do it.
Well, we gained the conditional use permit, we tear down the cabins.
Answer the, clear the room, I have no other questions.
That's a, that's a pretty severe consequence.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Put that in there.
I think it would, I think it would encourage people to follow the rule. How many acres total?
I don't know that I put that on there.
Uh, under half a section, oh, more than a quarter and under.
Under a half, yeah.
Under 320.
Yeah.
Oh, the, the map shows Farmstead in the very southwest part of that parcel, is that correct?
Um, yes, that's where the existing buildings are.
I see, I see. And these new buildings would be to the east of that?
They're just right there in that.
Right in that area.
Yeah.
They're in the same yard, yeah.
They're in that same yard, and the neighbor that was concerned about was to the east?
She was actually to the west, I believe.
Oh, to the west?
Yeah.
Is there a Farmstead there in the parcel 0094025?
Not that I am aware of, I believe she just had neighboring property.
Yes, it's their property.
There's no, there's no Farmstead there.
Yeah, no.
Oh, so they're, they are kind of isolated from other residences, okay, that's, that's.
It looks like the closest next building site is almost a mile away.
Yeah, pretty close.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
And that was the only citizen that had any concerns or showed up for the public hearing at the Planning Commission?
Yeah, both husband and wife spoke.
I, I did talk to them afterwards when I went outside and they were, they were better with it after I got done talking to them, telling them what was going on.
Very good, communication's always a good thing.
Yeah, I wanted to visit with them because they, they didn't understand some things, so it was, it was good when I left.
Very good. If there's no other questions for Judy or Mick, I will open the floor to the general public. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak for or against the application? It appears there are no one else to speak. I would seek a motion to close the public hearing part of this conditional use permit application.
Chairman, why should we close the public hearing?
Sir.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Is there any other questions or discussion? With that, the hearing is over. And we will move, oh, I'm sorry, motion, roll call, please.
Hugh Lee?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Woller?
Aye. Now, the public hearing is over. And do we need a motion to approve the application? Or forward it on?
Well, we don't have one, we have to approve it.
Right.
So, what we've done on these, what I started giving them is, you make the motion today to approve it. I will come back next evening with an actual resolution for you to sign that lays all this stuff out.
Okay.
Normally, we've done that at the same time in the past, right?
Well, we got done the last one that way.
Okay.
In the past, Judy had provided the similar formula that the Planning Commission uses. But since this is the very last stop and things we get at it at the last minute, I don't want to just handwrite them in. This gives me a chance to produce something a little more formal.
Okay, that's why it says forward it on. It's to us next week for the resolution.
And Judy, you'd like to assess this motion that you have here?
That's, I'll defer to Tyler, but that's typically what we try to do, is the motion that's.
Effectively, yes.
Okay.
Very good.
Chair, I would move that we approve the conditional use application by AHA3 Properties to allow a private hunting retreat located on, in Section 8, page 13, page 34, and all elements of the application are complied with and with the following condition, that the property will not be used for commercial purposes.
Sir.
Based, I'm sorry. Based on the following factual findings to wit. The application complies with current Lincoln County zoning regulations. The application complies with current Lincoln County subdivision regulations. The application is in conformance with the current Lincoln County competency plan and Lincoln County zoning map.
Sir.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hugh Lee? Weems?
Aye.
Woller?
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
I will come back next evening with a resolution and report on it.
Okay.
Very good. Becky, you have that on the agenda?
I will.
Very good. And that can just go on the consent agenda portion, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Next, we have discuss and consider term limits for the Lincoln County Planning Commission Board.
Again, Judy Clark, Lincoln County Planning Administrator. So what you have in front of you is kind of a discussion. Last week, I sent an email to the two planning commissioners that are on my planning committee, which is Michaela and Chris, and kind of told them the intent of, I was planning on reappointing a few of the planning commissioners. One planning commissioner resigned, so I came up with a name of somebody who was interested, and so I put that forward to them too, and then a discussion kind of ensued a little bit on, you know, what's the makeup of the board, you know, that sort of thing. So I talked with Chair Woller for a little while, and we just kind of decided to just open up the discussion to the whole board so we could decide what we want to do moving forward. So a little bit of background, as you know, I also serve as the Planning Administrator for the City of North Platte, and we have a Planning Commission also. Lincoln County's Planning Commission has never had term limits, which has worked for years. City of North Platte does have term limits, they're three, three-year terms, and then you can't serve on it again. I don't know the whole history, maybe Joe knows the history of it more so than I do, because I've only been doing this since 2008, Joe's been here longer. But historically in the county, finding a group of people wanting to volunteer to serve, because it's a totally volunteer board.
You just hit the pre-2000.
Is very, very difficult. So most of the time, when I lose a board member, I ask around for names. I think of people that I know, that I've heard of, people that have been active in the community, and I pick somebody, ask around if anybody knows who they are.
Former Board of Adjustment people?
Former Board of Adjustment people, you know, it, it just all depends. And once I get a name, I just bring it forward. That's kind of how the process has worked before. Is it a real fair process? Probably not. Could we get more people to volunteer? I, I don't know. And I know Michaela did ask about the current makeup of the board, because this is, after all, a county board. It's not just a city board. I think I told her there's 11 people on the board. We have four that would be, that I would consider ag people, live out in the ag community, and the other seven would be probably a little bit more urban. Two of them are, actually live in the city limits of North Platte. The other five live on maybe what I would consider blacktop urban-type subdivisions out in the county, but they are still blacktop road individuals, which, no fault to anybody or anything like that, but Chairman Woller had maybe suggested of trying to see if we could actually get some more agricultural individuals. I do always try to get them from neighboring communities. I have an individual from Brady, I have two from the Hershey area, one from Welphi area, and then the rest of them are several miles close to North Platte, but more probably North Platte, their addresses are North Platte, anyway. So that was just a discussion, and then the discussion on, should we term limit people or should we not? Typically, what I do with these individuals, like the ones that I'm reappointing, I call them and say, hey, do you want to serve again? The correct answer is yes. That's typically what I say. Most of them usually say, yeah, sure, I'll do it. But some of them have served for quite a while, and then they just say, you know, I'm older, I'm tired, I'm done. So that's kind of what happens, so. I don't know, I just thought we'd bring it up for discussion and see what you think.
If you're having trouble having. If you're having trouble having people volunteer, why do we want term limits?
We don't, we flat don't.
Then we can be answering my question.
We don't, we don't.
It's, it's a double-edged sword with term limits, I mean, it really is.
It really is.
You're, you're, you're limiting yourself to experienced people that are dedicated and don't get one thin dime to do this.
Yep, and they don't.
And that's kind of an insult to those people who have served twenty years, in my view, to limit them. We limit them when we reappoint.
That is correct, yeah.
That process is right here, and you can speak publicly if you think somebody isn't serving properly.
And that was Commissioner Weems, my conversation with Judy is, I felt like if there was a reason she recommended to us that there was somebody that wasn't either attending or seemed only focused on one issue, that if she brought that to us, I felt, even though it might be uncomfortable, that you had, especially your committee members, but also the entire board that would, uh, support Judy's recommendation and do the hard work.
Do it in the public.
Yeah, even though it's uncomfortable, I felt like that is how we limit who is and isn't on the board, so I agree with that.
And I'm a hundred percent, however you guys want to do it, we just thought we would have that discussion.
Yeah, it, it is a discussion that was had in sessions at the NPZA meeting in March, and some counties are transitioning to it, simply because, uh, it was my perception that with all of the development encouragement that was coming in, in some counties, they felt the fresh, fresh perspective was important. Um, it, I also feel like it's important to mention that the member who, um, did not want to be re- reappointed was one of the ag producers that sits on the board. And so, I did tell Judy, it was important to me that we keep the balance that we've had on that board of agriculture people and rural, residential, urban, um, it was a great dynamic, and it was important to me that, that the ag people keep a voice at the table. So, I'm, I'm the one that requested that we continue to search for somebody who could fill that position, and I'm willing to help do the work.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
As a recommendation to this board and to Judy, it is difficult to get good people to serve out in the rural areas. She does a great job, has done a wonderful job. I might recommend that this board spend fifty cents and advertise, we can have the media, we can have television, we can have radio, but I think a nice couple ads in a paper that were soliciting applications might help, and it takes the onus off her, and we share the responsibility.
I think that's a great suggestion. And there's, there's no rush in getting this, um, vacant seat filled. The Planning Commission only meets when they have an agenda item, and you still have plenty of board that comes to the meetings.
Yeah, typically, we very seldom can't get a quorum, but we very seldom have a full board in attendance also.
But, but don't you still usually meet roughly once a month?
Yep, roughly once a month.
I mean, you know, not just when they have it.
No.
Right, right, it's roughly once a month.
Yeah.
Um, therefore, this last winter, I think we went about, I don't know, five or six months, because we just didn't have anything on the agenda, but yes.
So, so if there's nothing on the agenda, Joe, they do not meet?
Yep, yep, that is correct.
Um, do they get reimbursed for mileage?
If they, if they ask for it, yes.
And many of them.
I have very few, um, the gentleman from Brady typically asks for it, I mean, that's kind of a long.
It is.
Long stretch, um, there's a couple of them that ask for reimbursement. The ones that are really close to North Platte typically don't, but they are all eligible for reimbursement for mileage.
I, I will echo that I think Judy's done a great job in recruiting, I think with all of the, um, current conversation with developments that are in the outline parts, if, if you look at where everybody lives, it is pretty clustered right around in the interstate area with the exception of, uh, Roger Merritt down in Welfleet, so everybody's pretty. So, I would, I would like to see us branch out a little farther with, you know, there's been development conversations going on in southwestern Lincoln County, northeastern Lincoln County. I feel like seeking out a ag member from those two areas, if we can convince somebody that, that having a seat at the table is a good thing, I, I would support that.
So, if you do advertise, and if I end up with the five people interested, how do you want me to, um, go about selecting that individual?
It's a suggestion, as you have in the past, you've tried to, on your own, break it up by region, I got a Sutherland, I got a Hershey area, I got up here, I got down there. I would hope that we would look at it that way and say, where is our makeup, where are we sure? That would just be my thought.
Well, I don't know if it was a historically formal process, but Judy, you and I interviewed Judy Peterson jointly.
That, that particular, um, opening, there were actually three individuals, and I think I had two openings at the time, so that was kind of odd. Um, I'd never done that before, and so I think, um, Kent Weems and I think Chris, or was it Jerry? I think it must have been Chris, um, sat down with the three, and we selected two, and then ultimately, the third one ended up on the board eventually anyway, so, yeah. But no, historically, that has never happened, so I didn't really have a formal process of, of how we would do that.
But to Joe's point on the recruitment side, where you need some help putting the word out, that's also, to me, the logical thing to do is, uh, you know, members of this board help you.
Okay.
Interview those people and have a conversation with them, doesn't have to necessarily be, but you can structure it. You know, you have, you run the program, you know, y- you want to know that they are, uh, relevant and, uh, informed and all the rest, and you could, you could have a few checkpoints that you could share with the board members.
Okay.
I think that would be common sense to have you lead that, but certainly to Joe's comment about getting the word out, we, we do need to help do that.
Okay.
But it, I know going through this, uh, recent years, it's hard to get people to volunteer to do these things, it's very difficult. Thank God for the ones that have been on there for years.
Yeah.
And they understand the process, and, uh, we'd be lost without them.
Yep.
Absolutely.
So, am I hearing that, um, Judy, with our help and media, advertised for a period of time, and then Judy and the two commissioners that serve on that committee, um, bring a recommendation to the board?
That would be my thought.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Right, very good.
Sounds good to me.
Do we need to act on the term limits, since it's a discussion?
No, I, I think if we're not going to do it, we don't need to have a motion, do we, Tyler?
In a hyper-technical sense, yeah, because it's on the agenda, so something has been done, but ultimately, no. Judy could take a formal vote to put something down.
Fair.
All right, very good.
Thank you, Judy.
Moving on to the next, we have a lot of planning stuff on the agenda today. Discuss and consider reappointment of Mitch Morehead, Roger Merritt, and Russ Miller as the county planning commission members for a three-year term.
Chair, I'd make the motion that we reappoint Mitch Morehead, Roger Merritt, and Russ Miller as planning, county planning commission members for a three-year term.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? I would just like to say, um, I attend as many of your planning meetings as I can. All three of these people bring a lot of good discussion and ideas and thoughts, and I appreciate their service. With that, any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye. The next item, discuss and consider reappointment of Frank Fleece and John McNeil to the Lincoln County Board of Adjustment for three-year terms.
Would be my motion to reappoint Frank Fleece and John McNeil to the Lincoln County Board of Adjustment for a three-year term.
Circle.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Once again, thank these people for their willingness to serve.
Will do.
Roll call, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye. Thank you, Judy.
Yep.
Thanks, Judy.
Moving on, our next item is the quarterly report by Thomas Gann, the Veteran Service Officer. And he is accompanied by Melissa.
Good morning.
Good morning, if you guys would like to announce your names and sign in.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Thomas Gann, I'm the Lincoln County Veteran Service Officer.
I'm Melissa Spading, I work in the Lincoln County Veterans Office.
Good morning, you guys.
Good morning, guys. Good morning. May I approach the bench here and give you guys some information?
Absolutely.
I don't know.
Here's more. Thanks, sir. Chris. So, what you have before you is the report from, I wanted to give you guys a GDX report, the VA has not released that yet. We're anxiously waiting, it's usually released in the spring, but it has not been released yet. I don't know if it's the clout to the government right now, but once that's released, I'll bring that forward, what that is, it's brings, breaks down the county and when it comes to financials, money, medical care and stuff like that. I usually try to provide that, this report, but we do not have that, because VA, VA has not provided it yet. But I, what we do have is a report from January one, as you see there, January to August, um, total communications and phone calls. We have five thousand five hundred and twenty-nine communications, and that's just Melissa and I doing that. And then I also provided you the completed twenty twenty-four report again, so you guys can compare. As you see, it's, it's increasing all the time. Um, I'm just, um, go down to, does anybody got any questions that, that I don't want to?
So, the front page is just the quarter, this three?
Yeah, January to August.
So, just, just over the six months versus?
Yeah, like I said, I, I wanted to be here earlier, but I was tr- we, we were holding on to that GDX, because I really like to provide that for you guys, but it just, it just kept going on and on and on, so we just had to report to you guys something, so. Thank you.
So, if you extrapolate that, you're going to be up around eight or nine thousand.
Pardon? Yeah, easily.
If you extrapolate those numbers, you're going to be up around eight or nine thousand communications.
Yeah, we, yeah, it's, um, it's very busy in our office, very busy. Moving on down, um, I want to talk about aid, so Nebraska Veterans Aid, um, we've, are, just our office have, uh, helped seventy-seven veterans of Lincoln County, uh, a total of two hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars. County aid was nine veterans at five thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. And moving on down, so American Legion, VFW, DAV, and, you know, a couple other, like Yatahe, is what it's called, they're at the Eagles Club. And anonymous veterans provide us gift cards for veterans and families' emergency needs, like groceries and that type of thing. And, uh, we track that, Melissa and I both track that, is like, as you see there, these gift cards are also tracked per veteran for accountability and, and good stewardship, so we, that is also tracked. Um, year-to-date, we're at two hundred dollars, as you can see, the gift cards are twenty-five dollars each.
Tom?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. On the county aid, the nine veteran families, do I understand that that's a direct result of the legislation that you supported and introduced?
I would say, yes, one or two of them, yes, definitely.
Yeah.
At least two of them, yes, absolutely.
That are eligible now that work before, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, because, because of the effort, the deficient.
Because, because of your effort to, Commissioner.
Well, no, it was all you, the deficiency that you recognized brought, you know, up, up the chain and got legislation passed your first year on the job to help assist all veterans, not just specific.
Certain, yes.
Veterans from certain time periods, so that had to have been a, a good, feel-good thing for you to be able to help that family.
Yes, it, it, it really is, it's a, a real feel-good, and a lot of it is, and, and we were, uh, out of ninety-three counties, we were number three in the state in helping veterans with aid.
Good work.
Very good.
So, um, we even beat Douglas County.
For a month.
For a month, and we all know where Douglas County is, right?
Yes.
That's where Omaha is at, we did beat Douglas County for one month.
Well, I think word has gotten out around Lincoln County and, and even beyond our borders that you and Melissa are there and available, and you're right, I have to schedule an appointment now to come over and say hi to you guys, so. Thank you for that, that's very important work.
The last sheet is, um, I provided you guys, um, Nebraska Veterans Aid, what, what, kind of what we do to helping veterans, just kind of a quick shot of what we do, um, helping them, you can, so I provided you a flyer in the back, so if you run across anyone that runs into a situation, um, send them our way, please. Even if they're homeless or anything like that, please send them to us.
And on the flyer here, Tom, that, that is aid that is, um, done out of the office in Omaha?
Lincoln.
At, at Lincoln?
Yes.
And has the response time for that improved?
Absolutely.
In recent, because I know that was one of our reasons for wanting emergency one-time aid locally is because this response time was taking too long. But it's my understanding that they have also addressed that at the state level by hiring more people, and very good.
Joe Conroy is head of that, in that office, and he's on it, and he's very efficient.
Very efficient.
Yeah, a lot of times we'll get the application approved within the day or two, so.
Oh, that is an incredible improvement.
Yeah, it is, yeah, so I mean, we have to, a lot of times wait for the checks to come, but that approval is.
Very quickly.
Yeah, he's, he's very efficient, is what he does there, so.
On top of the report, what I'd also like to address is, um, a bill that has just recently passed. Um, Melissa has some information that she'd like to share with you guys. It's a very significant bill that's going to affect.
All of us.
All of us.
All of us.
I'm going to throw an extra one over there.
Chris, yeah, thank you. Yeah, legislature passed LB six fifty, and, um, what this will do is, um, any disabled veteran that's service-connected, that's rate, has a service-connected disability through the VA will be eligible for, um, having their, their one, one vehicle paid for, for their driver's license exemption. And so, um, where, where we come into play with this is, I think we're going to have to be the ones to, to determine their eligibility, you know, like look up whether these people are eligible or not. And I know, we don't even know our numbers yet for sure, and how it's going to be implemented on our side, um, on how we're going to have to, have to, um, eh, you know, determine their eligibility, verify their eligibility, so. Um, I'm just, this is going to bring a lot of extra foot traffic, traffic and phone calls in our end, I think, too, because not every veteran is eligible, only those who have a service-connected disability, but that, I know it's over a thousand at least in our.
So, it'll be a thousand, over a thousand more phone calls and o- o- office visits to our office.
Is that any level of disability, or does it have to be a certain percentage?
From my understanding, I'm, I'm zero and up.
Zero percent, two hundred percent, yep.
And that's, yeah, there's.
That is a lot of veterans.
There's a lot of zero percenters that we don't, we're not even aware of.
The state's not even sure how they're going to handle it yet, but they passed it.
So, this will go on a form that you'll, uh, or you'll.
Well, they're going to try to set up, good question, Commissioner, so what they're going to try to do, we just had a meeting in McCook, um, last week about it, so what they're going to try to do is do, do it, uh, we've got a computer system, a state system, where hopefully we can, they're just going to set it up so we can just click a button, that they'll be eligible.
So, that, that this office, the treasurer's office will be oversee their eligibility? So that, that this office, the treasurer's office will be oversee their eligibility.
The treasurer's office will do that, let's see, have a transparency between the state agencies.
Yes.
Yeah. But yeah, we're not real sure how it's all gonna be implemented yet. I don't think the state knows for sure.
That would, that would make too much sense to make it that easy.
I know, yeah, and this goes into effect in January.
January, so it's gonna hit us like a ton of bricks in January, so.
Yeah, and all year long, because, and I think you guys are gonna have to approve every single application, too.
As you, as you read the language.
There's, it's been recorded, yeah, from what I read, so.
So you might get even more stacks of paper.
So yeah, we haven't talked to the treasurer's office yet, but they know, so.
I'm sure it'll be brought up at NACO, we're hoping.
I can make sure that.
Yes, make sure this is brought up at NACO.
Okay, yeah.
One thing I'd like to bring up also is that Melissa doesn't wanna, wants to hide a little bit, but I, I really want to lift her up. The outstanding work she does. I won't get into the details because I'm not supposed to, but I'm gonna tell you what Melissa did. Melissa found some information that provided a one-time payment of $94,000 to a fam, a veteran, a deceased veteran's family. Wow. One-time payment of over $94,000. So I just want to thank Melissa publicly for the outstanding work that she does. Outstanding attention to detail, care and compassion that she has.
Above and beyond.
Above and beyond.
Thank you.
I kudo, Melissa.
Thank you, thank you.
She doesn't like it, but.
Well, good work.
Thank you.
I, I know that the veterans that come into your office appreciate both of you, but Melissa is the forward-facing face and.
She takes the first blunt, yeah.
Yep, this is.
Good or bad.
This is just, the proof is in the pudding of how much you care about the community that you serve, so thank you for that. Very good. Thanks for ending that on a great note. Does anybody have any other questions for Tom or Melissa? I'm not sure who's doing mugs in the morning tomorrow morning, but would either one of you be available?
I'll go. I'd like to go, actually.
Okay, very good. I will communicate with you. We'll determine that later, all right?
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
Very good, thank you. We now have discuss and consider authorizing the chair to sign the engagement letter with Dvork Law Group for representation in pending habeas corpus actions.
All right. What you have in front of you is a very basic engagement letter with the Insurance Defense Council that since Thursday is going to be applying this insurance defense. Travelers decided that claims being made are non-monetary, so that we don't have coverage. They extended us, well, at the last hearing. And we're at a point now where we are kind of on our own on these things. I've not seen any more of them get filed. I had a conversation with Ryan. He ballparked each one of these cases would cost the county about $1,500 to $2,000. We've got a pretty good form response going now, and so if more of them show up, we're covered. If no more of them show up, we'll pay. But this is, this would be an attorney working for us, not for travelers.
Sounds like a necessary thing.
I wish it wasn't, but unfortunately it is.
On these particular cases or others that would develop should they come about?
At this point, it would just be for the habeas corpus actions. Anything that follows out of that would probably make a monetary demand, at which point travelers would pick up the check again.
Okay, sounds good.
And that's part of the reason I would recommend the board go with this individual is because that's who travelers want to open a system.
Chair, my motion would be to authorize you to sign engagement letter with Dvork Law Group for representation in pending habeas corpus actions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Gugli.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Huler.
Aye.
We are going to skip forward to the Lincoln County Budget Work Session. Susan has a schedule that she needs to stay on. Susan, if you'd like just to announce yourself and sign in.
Okay. My name is Susan Malin with McTessney Martin-Sagehorn and I work with the county. I'm preparing the budget every year.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for carving out some time for us today. I know how busy you are.
No problem. Okay. Does everybody have a copy?
Me, too.
I'm not sure what it says, but I have one.
Do, can we give one to Chris here?
Thank you.
All right, ready when you are.
Okay, so this year, we had some changes this year, but to start off with, the, the first page is actually summarizes the whole budget for this coming year. The budget that has, that, the property tax for the, the entire county is $20,109,494 at this point. This is a preliminary number, still has work to do, but it is the preliminary number based on everything that we have right now. That went up from last year with 17 to 28,479. So right now, as it stands, the budget increase has gone up about 16.7%. And there, there are several reasons for that, but let's, it'd probably be best to go straight to page two so you can see the, the other part of this. The first on page two is actually the new preliminary property tax request authority, which replaced the lid from last year. So basically, we start off with last year's request of the $17,228 and we can add some numbers to that to come up with this year's authority that we can, that we can ask for. The two primary items are, first of all, below the solid line, the allowed increase actually starts with the property taxes levied as opposed to the property taxes requested. Those are two different numbers and there's some minor reasons why there's a slight difference in that. Just has to do with changes that go on during the second half of the year, I think. And so the first item is actually the growth percentage, and the growth percentage for Lincoln County was 1.15% for this year. So that increase was 197,862.
Susan, that is a different formula than previous years' due for growth, correct?
Yes, that is.
Was not really discussed in the budget workshops that I remember.
Yeah, it is a slightly different, in the past, the growth percentage, which is, it's actually the same as the allowable growth percentage for purposes of the joint public hearing calculation, but in the past, it's taken the real property increase divided by the real property valuation. And that got changed this year, and I don't remember hearing about it either until I got a, the assessor's valuation and the numbers that I usually use aren't on there. So I went back and did some digging and that was changed. So it is actually the regular growth divided by the total valuation. So they don't break out the real property for this any longer. So that is 1.15%.
Say that again, Susan. It's the regular growth divided by the real?
No, the total valuation, includes all valuation.
Total.
So it doesn't split out any real property any longer.
Thank you.
The second piece of it is the inflation percentage, which is 5.17 for this year. That is provided by the state every year and that results in an increase of 891,479. So before any exceptions utilized, your authorized, your authority is $18,317 and the property taxes we have so far is $20,109. So you're, over your authority by 1.791 million right now. And there are these exceptions that can be utilized if necessary. And they are approved bonds, which this year, I should note that I did decrease the bond request because those bonds are coming due in 20, or 2029, I think is the final payment. And so I went and projected that out to see how much we need to keep in that fund in order to make sure all those payments have enough funds in them to, to be made. And so kind of right now, my projection is starting at $900,000 this year and dropping at $100,000 every year until the final year, we need to levy for those bonds.
And that is the jail bonds, the highway federal?
The highway.
The occupation bonds are paid.
They're, they're all paid. We still get a little money from them, just left over, but.
So if we were to use that line, it would be $900,000?
Yes, now.
If we should use it.
If you should use it. The problem is, next year, what happens is, any exceptions you take this year and add, you have to subtract next year.
Okay.
But with the bonds and actually the response to the declared emergency, those two numbers, 16 and 17 on here, if you utilize those, not only does that reduce your authority next year, but it also reduces the property taxes levied for purposes of calculating those increases. So instead of using the one point, the 17,243 on line 13, you would subtract anything that was for those two, the bonds, and we don't really have any response at this point, response to declared emergencies, so we're talking about the bonds. You would have to subtract the bonds from that, and so you would lose that increase, the increase on whatever that was. That's kind of a permanent thing that goes.
For next year.
Yeah, for next year.
For next year, very good.
The other exceptions you have are public safety services such as jail sheriff funds and that is only the portion that's funded by property taxes. So any funds that those divisions receive over property taxes like prison reimbursement, jail commissary, sheriff contracts, I think some grants, those would be deducted from that total sheriff or jail expense to come up with that. The same applies to county attorneys and public defenders. Any money that they have budgeted to come in will offset the amount of property taxes that are utilized in this calculation. So those are all possible additions to the authority. And again, they do reduce the amount last, the next year, but then if you need to, you can add them back on the bottom part of this. It's.
Complicated?
Yeah.
Yep.
Actually, it's not quite as complicated as the lid, but it's complicated. Any questions on that?
So the inter-local agreements are mentioned here. That's only ones pertaining to public safety, like our 911 dispatch.
Yeah, yeah.
So no other, no other inter-locals come into play, even if there's a financial amount attached.
Right, yeah. They have taken out all of that capital improvements, all of that's been taken out of this whole thing. And it's just basically they're trying to be able to provide for public safety is mostly in the bonds.
So a new bond would affect us how?
Good question.
If you had a new bond, there, you're, depending on how much the bond is, that would increase your overall levy and, you know, in the first year of a bond, we have to budget a lot in order to get through the cycle that, to get those payments made.
For future.
Yeah. For future payments. And so that would, depending on the dollar amount of the bond and what the payments are, that would have an effect on your levy. It may or may not on the authority, that just depends on how, is determined that, you know, whether it's needed or not.
So is the lit, is the, we, we call it a cap or whatever you would call it now, I'm forgetting a bit.
Uh huh.
Is that on the levy?
No, it's just on the dollar amount.
On the dollar amount, and so what, let's say, for example, we need to build a new counting shop and we have to bond it, okay? Are we able to do that by increasing the, you know, I'm not sure what.
You would, in, in that particular case, like you couldn't exclude the capital improvements like we could before, but you could show the bond payments, the bond levy as an exclusion. But then that goes against your calculation for next year, that's, that's.
That's my point exactly, so it, it seems like it's a never-ending catch-22, never-ending.
Never-ending.
And, I mean, I understand the first thing to do when you're digging a bowl is to stop digging.
Yeah.
How do you stop digging? I don't, I don't understand how we do, how we do stop digging.
Yeah, for, for large, you know, I don't know, you know, if there's any, I, I don't think there's any provision in the new law that says, oh, if you need a new $10 million building, where do you get the money for it?
Maybe I'm putting the cart before the horse here, but is that where us starting sinking funds or cash reserve accounts comes into?
Yeah, but even if you start a sinking fund, you still have to get that from somewhere. That comes from tax dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we, we.
Well, everything comes from tax dollars.
John Smith to give me money to put in a sinking fund.
Yeah.
I mean, at the end of the day, everything we do comes from tax dollars, right?
Yeah, I mean, at one sort or another, probably, you know, I mean, there are other types of tax dollars, but property taxes, that's where you would have an effect. And that bond, you know, basically you could increase your request and then actually build it into this calculation, but it would kind of affect what that increase is for future years.
The 2025 valuation, are those figures solid at 6.6?
Yeah, yes. We received those, I think at the final on Friday. Are there any questions on that? Probably a lot.
A lot.
It's like a what?
We got questions I don't even know yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Though we've got time, I mean, but then if you look at page three, that's where your allowable growth is. And so you apply the 2% base increase that you're allowed to have and the 1.15, which actually is applied to the levied amount last year, to the levied amount rather than the, I mean, to the requested amount rather than the levy amount, but it's essentially the same. So you have a property tax request authority for growth is 17.771 million and your budget is at 2.109, which just means that you have to participate in the joint public hearing.
Means what?
You have to participate in the joint public hearing. That's what this calculation does. It determines if you have to participate in that.
So the property tax, the bottom line, that 2,338?
That's how much it exceeds the allowable growth.
Right, so does that mean District 5 has to cut 2.3 million from his budget?
One through five.
Oh, one through five, oh, I'm sorry.
I think it was just five. You would have to cut your budget that much if you don't want to participate in the joint public hearing.
We have to cut it by the 1.791 to get to zero.
We still have to participate in the joint public hearing, but so you're getting the budget balance, so there's.
Hearing's not your problem.
Yeah.
Paying bills and operating your infrastructure.
Exactly.
Maintenance and your jail system and all the rest of it. You've gotta come up with the money or we're gonna have to drastically cut programs.
Yeah.
Am I also correct, though, that our cash balance was a lot lower?
Yeah, the cash balance.
Drastically lower.
The cash balance overall, and I kind of did a little.
Where you at?
Huh? I have just, this is just something I did real quickly this morning, just because I was, the cash balance, and I was just looking at the funds that affect or are affected by the property taxes. And so for the general property taxes, the cash balance overall went down by about three point, one point three million, almost one point four million. So that affected the increase in what you needed to, for the, for the budget, for the property tax request. And the budgeted dispersments actually went up for just those, the ones associated with the general fund, about three point nine million overall. But that did include a significant increase in the transfer from general to roads to get roads to balance. So that was about like two point three million that is increasing the budgeted expenditures, but it's also a budgeted receipt on the road fund side. So.
What explains the, the one point three million down in the cash balance?
Um, primarily, it, roads was down one point, a little over one million in total. And then inheritance was down about five hundred and three thousand, just, just in the balances. So they transferred out more than they actually got during the year. And then roads actually decreased their cash balance by the end of the year by about one, a little over one million dollars. The rest of the funds didn't change too much. The general fund received money from the COVID fund, so their increase was just a little over two hundred thousand in cash. So it wasn't a lot. The rest of the pages are just a summary of the receipts and the dispersments that you usually get. And then the clerk's office has the detail of the dispersments. Mine are just a summary.
So this is our starting point. What's the best next step?
Well, first of all, you probably need to see where, if you want to cut. And I can also provide you with the potential dollar amounts that could increase that.
Let's say we didn't cut, okay? You had mentioned that, because this is where I'm still a little foggy, and it's because I've got old guy foggy brain.
I'm probably foggy.
But, you know, it was easy back in the old days when, you know, you know, I mean, I remember when we had no Lids, then we came on with the fifty cents, then we came on a three and a half, and all, you know, they played all kinds. But right now, it's not a percentage, it's a dollar amount, okay?
Yeah, I mean, the percentage is still there for the fifty, fifty cents, but that's, you don't have that issue.
We won't get to there, because that's not a, not a real discussion right now. But the, how much can we raise taxes on our people this year? Can we raise it all the way up till we're clear up to the lid of fifty cents?
Probably not.
They've never allowed us to do that.
You'd have to have exceptions.
How much can we to, to fund?
Okay. And I can go back, and I haven't actually looked at the exceptions yet.
Okay.
What the exception marks on, have to do a calculation on that. So those exceptions, I mean, if you look at, check expenses here.
But the exceptions help us one year and hurt us the next year, right?
Yeah. And so you add them back this year, you subtract it out next year, but you can add them back next year based on next year's budget.
But I don't want to take the exceptions.
I don't either.
Because you can do it one time, and then it pretty much is stagnant unless you just take just what you need.
I'm saying, let's, don't take the exceptions, let's just bite the bullet and do it. What's that dollar amount we can go to? Can we add two million? Can we add three million? Can we add four million, five million, or ten?
Well, basically, you can add, whatever those two numbers are, one point one million to last year's actual. So right now, you need to be able, if you wanted to stay within this new cap, you have to cut the budget about one point eight million.
One point eight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Or we have to find exceptions to that, to that extent.
Okay, if you get the exceptions, so one point eight million we need to cut if we want that understanding. Thank you. That I can understand.
Thank you. That makes, that makes a little more sense to me, too. All right, everybody, sharpen your pencils. Are there any other questions for Susan? I have a bunch, but I also have your email and Becky's and Sherry's. I'll be communicating with you.
This is a complicated issue. I mean, it didn't happen overnight. We're not going to get out of it overnight, but there's a lot of other factors that are playing into this, so.
I, I sure hope, because after I had a conversation with Becky about the one item that we, you know, on the, different than previous years, that was never discussed in any of our workshops, I went back and read the information, and I could not find that. I hope there's no, no other surprises like that.
So do I. I hope so, too.
In the, in the state statute that they passed that we have to live by this year.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Every, every county, which most counties outstate are very frugal, and we're basically being penalized because we've been very frugal.
Yeah.
Yep.
And now we're getting our hands slapped for being responsible for holding our tax dollars down as possible, as much as we could. And it's kind of a kick in the tail. We'll have to live with it a little. Thanks for leading us through it.
Okay.
Very good. Very good.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan. We're going to now go into a closed session, Tyler, correct?
With what I have, I can just send out an email if you'd rather.
Let's do that for yours and go into the other closed session. All right. I would seek a motion to go into closed session to discuss deployment of security personnel and devices.
Be my motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing deployment of security personnel and devices.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session for the discussion of deployment of security personnel and devices. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. With that, staying in the meeting will be the Board of Commissioners and all of the elected officials who choose to attend, along with our legal representation, Tyler Volkmer, Tammy White, and Becky Russell.
Make a motion to go back into open session at 11:46.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to return to open session at 11:46. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Hughling.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Okay, we are at the point. We have a few more claims to sign. We have opportunity for hearing concerns from elected officials, department heads or their representatives.
Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Hobbie Superintendent. So just a quick update on our road closure that we had on Friday. So we did have to close Platt Valley Road over there by Parkway, by Hershey just north there. We had a culvert collapse on an irrigation ditch there. So they're overworking on that right now to get it sized up and ordered. It's a pretty large one, so something we don't normally stock. As soon as I have any more information on when we'll get it and we'll get right on it and install it and open it up. But I don't know when that'll be yet. Just wanted to update you guys on that and let you know where we're at there.
There's plenty of other roads, Boer's, north, south, east, west that people living in that area can take. So inconvenient for sure for some.
It'll be a minor inconvenience for some folks, but yeah, there's nothing that it's going to cut off anytime. So I'll give you an update.
All right.
Make a motion to go back into open session at 11:46.
Aye.
We have a motion and a second to return to open session at 11:46. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Hughling?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wiems?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are at the point. We have a few more claims to sign. We have opportunity for hearing concerns from elected officials, department heads or their representatives.
Jason Schultz, Lincoln County, Hobbie Superintendent. So just a quick update on our road closure that we had on Friday. So we did have to close Platt Valley Road over there by Parkway, by Hershey just north there. We had a culvert collapse on an irrigation ditch there. So they're overworking on that right now to get it sized up and ordered. It's a pretty large one, so something we don't normally stock. As soon as I have any more information on when we'll get it, we'll get right on it and install it and open it up. But I don't know when that'll be yet. But just wanted to update you guys on that and let you know where we're at there.
There's plenty of other roads, both north, south, east, west, that people living in that area can take. So inconvenient for sure for some.
It'll be a minor inconvenience for some folks, but yeah, there's nothing that it's going to cut off anytime. So I'll give you an update as soon as we get a date on when we'll have that on the ground and be able to install it.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yep.
Jerome, do you have anything else?
I was just waiting for the hall to put it.
Very good. Are there any committee -- are there any committee reports? You know, I better look in my calendar.
Chris and I's committee will be meeting with you next week when Chris is back.
You were talking to Tyler or me?
I was talking to the board because we were going to -- remember, we talked about our little policies and procedures. And Chris had asked that we put that off a week until
Oh, correct.
he can be here. And so just making that note from our last minutes, we were going to talk about it this week and we will be talking about that next week.
Very good.
Did you get my comments when you were out there? Well, I have to talk a little louder than some people. I have a hearing problem. So if you got my comments, that was the only reason that was, is because of my poor hearing.
He wasn't yelling because he was mad or anything. It was just because he has to, because he can't hear himself.
Just being my typical Joe.
It was a closed session after all. Very good. Let's talk about -- Joe, it was your turn to do prayer today, but Commissioner Wiems filled your shoes for you and did it.
Oh, thank you.
Kent, would you also like to do mugs tomorrow?
He can do mugs.
Do you want to do mugs tomorrow?
Sure, I'd be loved to.
Tom Gann would like to be invited.
Sure, that's fine.
I'll make sure that you guys are hooked up for that. Very good. Thank you.
I mean, you did such a good job on prayer. I thought maybe you would want to, but if you -- I mean, I don't know. You don't want to cut into my action.
No, I don't want to cut into it. I've got a project and I'm not delighted.
Should we just put this in with Chris's packet, Becky?
Yeah, I can.
That's all the stuff that was handed out during the meeting.
What was your last one?
One, three, downing.
Okay, got it.
Those paper clips threw us a loop. We missed a lot of
Yeah, I'll have to show her. She was trying to be efficient and do it before.
When I see a paper clip, I assume it's bundled.
So did I, but I ended up with a lot of skips in my presentation.
Yeah, well, I wasn't paying attention.
I wasn't either until I
I always screwed it up because I started it. It was right here.
We're used to that, Joe. That's why there's four commissioners that sit behind you. We are still being recorded. I think I'm being assaulted. Does anyone have anything else for the good of the county? Becky, do you have anything? Very good. Are you still going to do a budget work session or are you just going to go today with what we've got?
You can do it, everyone, but I'm leaving because I've got some abscesses.
Joe, are you here next Monday?
If I can get it delayed again like I did today, I got them put it off till after the meeting at the end of it, but I got to go right now.
Okay.
So I think I'll be here, but I probably won't be here for much of the budget work session because I have my other item done.
Okay. I feel like we should probably stay on task with the budget and just
Yes.
it might be five minutes, it might be 25 minutes, but I think putting that on next week's agenda is a good thing. And should we wait and see on the rules? Because it's important to me that all five commissioners be here for rules. So if you're not sure about next Monday
Oh, I will. I'll let you know because the problem is they don't call me until freaking Friday with the time. That's the problem. I said, Kent, can you let me know ahead of time? No, it's whatever.
We've lived this way for 150 years, kicking down the road a lot.
Yeah, we can cable it or we can wait until following Monday.
Anyway, I hope that I will be here next Monday. I plan on being here next Monday, but totally at the mercy of the schedule, we're at surgery show.
All right. All right.